Good evening. Call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education. May I have a motion to adjourn into an executive session to discuss contract negotiations?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Good evening. Call to order reconvene into the special meeting of the Board of Education, June 9th, 2021. Will everyone please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have, after our recent elections, the district clerk is going to administer the oath of office to our newly elected and re-elected board members. The oath will be administered to the following board members for their respective terms: Dawn Tauber from May 18th, 2021 through June 30th, 2024; Anthony Anderson, May 18th, 2021 through June 30th, 2024; Mr. Jamel Evans, who is new this evening to us, May 18th, 2021 through June 30th, 2024; and Dr. Sergey Koifman from May 18th, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. So may I ask all of you to rise for your oath with Ms. Vitucci.
Please stand, raise your right hand, and state your following.
Raise.
And you guys could just read it. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will faithfully discharge the office of the Monro Woodbury Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations to everyone. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a memorial resolution in honor of Susan Giza. Whereas Mrs. Susan Giza was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as a teacher, her employment with the district began September of 2000. And whereas through her dedication to the district, Susan has touched the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the entire district, extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude, as well as its sincere condolence to the Giza family. It is hereby resolved and approved that the flag at the high school will be flown at half-staff on Thursday, June 10th, in memory of Susan Giza. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a memorial lasting for all time. Thank you very much, and we would like to express our condolences to her family. We will now begin with our accommodations for the evening, where the following will be recognized: Community Connection Awards, and that is being presented by Dr. Hassler.
Good evening, everyone. We will begin this evening's recognition with our annual Community Connection Awards. The Community Connection Awards were created many years ago by our district leadership committee to recognize an individual or an organization that exemplifies the spirit of the Monroe Woodbury School District through community-based activities and service to the school district. The awards are given individually by each of our schools, as well as by our PTA council. I'm very proud this evening to recognize the following community members, particularly during these challenging times, who continue their support of the Monroe Woodbury School District, and most importantly, are our students. To start this evening off, we have here from Sapphire, Mrs. Kaitlyn Caldwell, the principal to present the Sapphire Community Connection Award.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, members of our district cabinet, and all those who are celebrating with us here and at home. My name is Kaitlyn Caldwell, and I'm the principal at Sapphire Elementary School. On behalf of Sapphire, it is my great honor to speak about a very important member of our school community whom we're honoring this evening with the Community Connections Award. Over the last two years, we have all undoubtedly seen the world change around us at a meteoric pace. However, I am proud to speak to you about someone who has never wavered and who has ensured our students' safety and security are the top priority: School Resource Officer Ken Malgieri. Officer Malgieri, or Officer Ken, or Officer Kenny, as he's affectionately known at Sapphire, is truly an extraordinary asset to the Sapphire family. Officer Malgieri retired from the New York City Police Department as a patrol officer before he came to Sapphire, the happiest place on earth. I'm not sure what he envisioned the start of his retirement looking like, but I can imagine he did not expect to spend his days elbow-bumping five- and six-year-olds, strapping our little ones into car seats, or reminding students to use walking feet while they traveled throughout the building. No rain, sleet, or snow can keep Officer Kenny from getting our students in and out of the building safely. Even yesterday, during the downpour dismissal, Officer Ken was not deterred. He was soaked, but our students were dry and safe when they got to their parents' cars. Each day, Officer Ken greets students at the doors upon arrival, knowing every single one of their names, and making a special effort to know them exactly while the year He knows everything about them. He can recognize their backpacks, their lunchboxes, their pets' names, and he even knows their siblings, even if they don't go to Sapphire. He visits our students in the cafeteria during lunch to get to know them even more closely, to ask them about their favorite sports, favorite players, and to give them nicknames as they skip through the lobby. We can hear him joyfully call out, "Here comes the skipper!" and our students light up immediately. Officer Ken joins the students at recess and in gym. He checks COVID screenings, he confirms dismissal routines, he mans the greeter desk when needed. He's up for all of the excitement that comes with working at Sapphire, and he's truly one of our own. Our students love seeing Officer Kenny, and we are so proud to have him as a member of the Sapphire team. Since the reopening of our schools, Officer Ken has eagerly done absolutely everything to ensure our students' safety and connection. He can be heard asking, hopefully, when our students would be returning, telling us how much he has missed them, and reminding everyone of the magnificent energy our students bring each day. Little does he know, Officer Ken brings just as much warmth and compassion to our building as our students, faculty, and staff. It is truly an honor to celebrate Officer Ken Malgieri with the Community Connections Award from Sapphire. Officer Ken, on behalf of the entire Sapphire community, we love and are very grateful for you.
Thank you. Up next to present the Smith Clove Community Connection Award is Mr. Chris Berger, the principal, and Ms. Nicole Reagan, the assistant principal.
Like, don't trip walking across the stage. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. On behalf of Smith Clove, and myself, and Ms. Reagan, we would like to present our Community Connection Award to Staples of Central Valley. Representing Staples tonight, we have the general manager, Mr. Jonathan Bryn, and the district manager, Ms. Vanessa Guzman. We want to thank them because Staples, although they are part of a nationally franchised store, obviously, they have demonstrated that they are clearly part of a local community and exemplify exactly what it means to be part of that community. They have donated, I would estimate, hundreds and hundreds of dollars' worth of resources and materials for our students and families this school year. At the beginning of the school year, when things were very, very difficult, we were, because of the model that we were currently operating under, where we had students working remotely from home, we were transitioning to a hybrid model. We had kids going back and forth from school, parents picking up supplies, and you can imagine with five- and six-year-olds, oftentimes those supplies were lost, misplaced, and thankfully, with the additional resources that we were donated through Staples, we were able to provide those materials to families, especially for the pickups for our remote-only students. And regardless of what model we were in, we knew that our students were going to be well-equipped to thrive. We were given computer messenger bags, backpacks, laptop backpacks, crayons, pencils, erasers, staples, you name it, a wide array of resources. We were even given hand sanitizer for each of our classrooms, and at that time, if you remember, hand sanitizer was not easy to find. So, you know, we are very grateful and appreciative of Staples. We thank them for their support in the community, and we look forward to a partnership with them in the future. I'm not sure, is Mr. Bryn and Mrs. Guzman here? Come on up. Thank you.
The next Community Connection Award... Our next Community Connection Award is for Central Valley Elementary School, and here to present on behalf of Central Valley is Dr. Christine Arlt, the school principal.
Good evening. I am honored this evening to be able to recognize Mr. Tom Sullivan for the Central Valley Community Connections Award. For many years, Mr. Sullivan has really worked very quietly behind the scenes, not only assisting our Central Valley families, but our Monroe Woodbury families throughout our community. A day doesn't go by that we are reaching out to Mr. Sullivan and asking for assistance, and to this day, he has not yet blocked our numbers, so we haven't had to use the secret phone number that he doesn't know yet. Mr. Sullivan goes out of his way to assist in any way possible, from helping to make our families have their holidays be a little bit brighter, to helping find resources and ensuring whatever needs are needed, he meets them or finds resources to meet them. This year especially, with the impact that we have had, he went above and beyond, not only for our families in need and during the holidays, but also to ensure that the wish of one of our parents who was terminally ill was met. And the family and the gratitude is just incredible, and we cannot thank him enough for all that he has done and continues to do for our community. And with that, I am just so very honored and pleased to be able to present this award to Mr. Sullivan this evening.
Our next Community Connection Award will be from North Main Elementary School, and here to present on behalf of North Main will be Mr. Joseph Cotto, the school principal.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. Monroe Woodbury School District is built upon the support of our community and our students. Mr. Trey Lindsey and Mrs. Iris Lindsey are some of the most spirited, behind-the-scenes parent volunteers we have ever had. Neither parent is looking for the limelight. In fact, I'm sure they will be embarrassed by this recognition, yet they are the most deserving of this award. This husband-and-wife duo have taken on many roles in North Main Elementary. Iris has been a PTA officer, an active volunteer, and almost on every committee the PTA has. She has taken on the fifth-grade yearbook committee during the pandemic, a year in which it is very difficult to obtain student pictures, and created a yearbook that meets student and parent expectations. In the drama club, she is active in all aspects, including rehearsals and fundraising, to name a few. Trey is just as active in those committees as well. Two years ago, Mr. Davis and I were setting up for the PTA movie night, and we ran into some technical difficulties. I know you find that hard to believe. Next thing we knew, Iris made a call, and in came Trey, with an entire video projection set, including a large speaker for the sound, everything we needed. At that point, Mr. Davis and I retired from movie night responsibilities, and Trey took over, which was no loss for me, I will say. Trey has also been instrumental behind the scenes, creating many videos, including the production of our current drama production, which many of you may have seen online, which would not be possible without a professional video editor. There are so many times when things just fall into place, and we often wonder at North Main, "How did that get done?" The answer? Mr. and Mrs. Lindsey did it. They both are the most positive, helpful, reserved, behind-the-scenes supporters of our building and district. They are, and always will be, North Main family. Congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Lindsey.
Our next Community Connection Award will be from Pine Tree Elementary School, and here to present on behalf of Pine Tree is Mr. Brian Judice, the school principal.
Okay, good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Pine Tree BLC, and Mr. Martin and myself, I would like to share our Community Connection Award winner for this year, which is Dinners for Kids, Orange County. And representing that organization is our very own Monroe Woodbury graduate and the owner of the Empire Diner, David Wenger. According to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, more than 13 million children in the U.S. go to bed hungry. With the impact of COVID-19, that number has increased greatly. Rabbi Roger Lerner, who joined the Monroe Temple in July of 2019, was looking for a way to directly address the issue of food security in his community. He was seeking to replicate a successful meal program originated in Pennsylvania, which partnered with a local restaurant to provide hot, nutritious meals to food insecure families. He solicited support from his congregation in March 2020, and expeditiously formed a committee to lead the charge. As a result, Dinners for Kids, Orange County was born. Since May, in conjecture with the Empire Diner, which is owned by David Wagner, the fervent volunteer effort to plan, fundraise, prepare, and deliver meals has resulted in over 5,000 meals being provided for 20 Pine Tree Elementary students and their siblings. The Empire Diner, Modern New York, provides these dinners. They prepare fresh, kid-approved, nutritious, delicious, and balanced dinners. Each meal is packaged in microwave-safe containers that is easy for the children to heat on their own. Dinnersforkidsorangecounty.org provides six meals per week for each child in a given family. Although the dinners are prepared by the Empire Diner, and there is a nominal food cost associated with the restaurant's efforts, all donations received go directly to feeding children. Due to the diligent committee fundraising and generosity of donors and sponsors, Dinners for Kids, Orange County has expanded to the Chester area and is poised to expand in the Monroe Woodbury School District, adding 25 additional children to the existing program. I'd like to recognize Mr. David Wagner, who is here, and pleased you can come forward. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Our next Community Connection Award will be from the middle school, and here to present on behalf of the middle school is Mr. Mike Masano, the principal.
Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. On behalf of the middle school, we are just so grateful for the community response that we have had over the course of this last year during the pandemic. There's been a tremendous expression of gratitude and appreciation for everything that schools provide for our community, and no one has exemplified that appreciation in action as much as Mr. Kim and Ms. Q from Walgreens in Monroe.
Aye.
In the weeks leading up to our full reopening of schools, Ms. Q and I were in direct communication, sometimes, it actually initiated with a phone call at 10 o'clock on a Friday night, to make sure that our teachers and staff could be fully vaccinated by the time the full reopening of schools occurred. They coordinated hundreds of vaccines to Monroe Woodbury employees over the course of just a few days, and really helped us in a critical way to be prepared for the full reopening of schools. So it is my honor and pleasure and deep appreciation to nominate and bring forward the districts, on the district's behalf and on the school's behalf, the gratitude that comes with the Community Connection Award to Ms. Q and Mr. Dan Kim.
Our next Community Connection Award will be awarded from the high school, and here to present on behalf of the high school is high school assistant principal, Ms. Shauna Markovich.
Good evening, everyone. I am fortunate to have the pleasure of introducing our Community Connections nominee this evening. As Mr. Cassidy couldn't be here, he is at the Outstanding Student Celebration for our valedictorian and salutatorian, as well as for his own son. So I have the pleasure and honor tonight to speak about our nominee, Dr. Lisa Sassy. Over the past year, Dr. Sassy has supported the high school in navigating through COVID-19 and the Department of Health ever-changing mandates and regulations. She played an integral part in developing plans to meet these guidelines, with the ultimate goal of providing a safe environment for students and staff. She worked collaboratively to help create actionable plans and processes to bring our students back into the buildings in a prudent and sustainable manner. Dr. Sassy works tirelessly to support our school community and is consistently looking for ways to improve and expand upon that which we do. No matter what time of day, or the day of the week, Dr. Sassy is a dependable resource and makes herself available to all who need her. She supports the district in exploring and analyzing updates, thinking outside of the box, and leads the charge in tracking and tracing positive cases that require quarantine, including notification of our families. She also organized a heart screening that was made available for all high school students in Orange County to attend with the purpose of identifying unknown heart ailments, as well as focusing on students who previously had COVID-19, looking at potential impacts on their heart. Dr. Sassy has not only been a vital part of the planning process in the high school, but has also been a resource for the entire district and community at large. She's a leader amongst her colleagues and a true asset to the Monroe Woodbury Central School District and community. We are so honored to call her ours, and it's my privilege to present this award to her tonight.
Good job, Lisa. And our final Community Connection Award will be awarded by our PTA council, and here to present on behalf of the PTA council is the president, Mrs. Shannon Chambers.
Thank you. On behalf of the Monroe Woodbury PTA Council, and on behalf of all the PTAs in the school district, we have nominated Kathy Gardner of Smith Clove and Mary Ann McInerney of the middle school for their kindness and their compassion and action in connecting with all the schools within the district. And they did all this during their spare time while teaching during a pandemic. Mary Ann and Kathy stepped up when our special education PTA asked for a more student-centered autism awareness campaign. They were all over it and connected with the safety ambassadors in the middle school and completed a video on autism awareness. You may have seen it, it was featured on NBC News. They also created an ongoing project that encourages students to access and create a buddy system that will increase inclusion. And also Kathy Gardner facilitated the Colors of the World Crayons Initiative in the K-1 schools with the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association and SEPTA, and placed crayons that represent the skin tones of the people of the world during a time of uncertainty for many. Her mission of creating a sensory-friendly library at Smith Clove and thinking differently for all of the students in our district is selfless. Kathy also served on the Red Ribbon District Committee and genuinely reaches out at an opportunity to volunteer and shine in a time of darkness with professionalism. So we present this Community Connection Award to Kathy Gardner and Mary Ann McInerney.
Council and PTA Presidents and Co-Presidents.
I would like to begin with a quote from John Dewey, one of the most significant educational leaders of the progressive movement in the 20th century. What the best and wisest parent wants for his own child, that must the community want for all of its children. Our next recipients embody that philosophy. They are a group of hard-working, dedicated parents providing resources and programs to all of our families. They spend countless hours volunteering to support all of our students. I would like to thank and acknowledge their hard work on behalf of the students in our district. This year's gift is a representative, is a representation of the conversations we've had with PTA this year about finding joy. We hope that you will get a little R and R this summer and take time to take care of yourself. The following are the recipients. MW PTA Council President Shannon Chambers. MW PTA Council Treasurer Deborah Megan. MW PTA Council Secretary Dawn Tauber. Sapphire Elementary PTA President Nikki Shevitz. Smith Clove PTA President Amy Whitrock. Central Valley Elementary PTA President Kelly Chicharella. North Main Elementary PTA President Jessica Solceni. Pine Tree Elementary PTA President Anne Marie Calabella Kaiser. Monroe Woodbury Middle School PTA President Jill Forsteri. MW High School PTSA President Dawn Tauber. And SEPTA PTA President Bernie Vega. Thank you.
Over 1.5 million juniors from about 21,000 high schools took the 2019 PSAT, which is the exam that serves as the initial screening for the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential success in rigorous college studies. The nationwide pool of over 1.5 million students then gets trimmed down to the semifinalist group, which represents less than 1% of high school seniors, or approximately 16,000 students for that semifinalist group. Then, that 16,000 group of students is trimmed down further to only 7,500 National Merit Scholarship winners. Monroe Woodbury was once again fortunate enough to have a student score in the top 1% of all students that took that PSAT and ultimately become a National Merit Scholarship winner. He was selected by a committee of college admissions officers and high school counselors who appraised a substantial amount of information submitted by both finalists and their high schools, including their academic record, the difficulty of level of subjects that they studied and the grades that they've earned, their scores on the PSAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. They assessed their contributions in leadership and school and community activities. They wrote an essay on their own behalf, and there was a letter of recommendation submitted on behalf of the school district. And we are very proud to recognize Monroe Woodbury's National Merit Scholarship winner
Thank you. We will take a brief five-minute recess at this point and then reconvene for our next agenda item. Reconvene back into session. No board business was discussed during the brief recess. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of our Board of Education Student Representative, Good evening. I have the honor this evening of recognizing Ms. Emily Wong as our Student Board of Education Representative for the 2020-2021 school year. Emily was one of the candidates that submitted her resume in the spring of 2020 and was anonymously selected by the members of the Board of Education. Emily has created a free SAT prep program for the students in the Monroe Woodbury High School. The program has had such success, named Essential Prep, has been attended this year by roughly 200 high school students. The program launched this fall, and over 60 students originally signed up. Emily brought on help from her senior classmates and again was able to hold classes in the spring, which were attended by over 120 students this spring. Emily has been a voice for the students of Monroe Woodbury during this academic school year, and we would like to wish her the best at Carnegie Mellon next fall. Congratulations, Emily. be accompanied by all of the board members.
All right, so as the board members are coming up to the stage, last year, we, this was different. Last year, I presented the retiring staff from my son's bedroom. And we didn't know what anybody looked like, so we had to have pictures of everybody, which was wonderful. So tonight is kind of a hybrid. I know some people are here, some people I'm sure are watching from home, but we wanted to make sure we were able to recognize everybody. And tonight's group, just so you know, represents 855 years of service to this district. That's a long, long time. If you ask my kids, they're probably like, "Oh, yeah, you were born back then." But that's a lot of years. So congratulations. Thank you for all you've done. I think we all just wish you really, really, we wish you well as you move on to the next phase. Some people are probably very jealous of you. But more than anything else, over those 855 years, there were a lot of, I'm sure, lives changed. I'm sure there were some incredibly happy moments. I'm sure there were moments that, you know, like what we all do as educators, right? There are those moments where you probably were, you know, got in the car and you started to cry because you just didn't connect with that one kid, didn't reach that one kid that one day in that one moment. But I think it's important that you know that all of you have impacted kids, regardless of your role, whether you're a teacher, or an administrator, or a food service worker, or a monitor, or a bus driver, or a custodian. Every single person has played a role in this whole district, so thank you very much. And with that, if you're here, I'd like you to come on up, but I'll go in order. I'd first like to recognize Jeannie Amorino. Jeannie's been a reading teacher at CV for a lot of years. Congratulations, Jeannie. Next, I'd like to recognize one of our one-on-one monitors from the high school, Ms. Heidi A former typist, now enjoying the beaches of Delaware, a typist from the high school, Our Assistant Director of Transportation, one of the most challenging jobs, I think, in the entire school district for lots of reasons. Cooking a lot of meals over the last 25 years is the cook manager from North Main, Lori One of our teaching assistants at the middle school, Cheryl Cordero. A fax teacher at the high school, Rosanna D'Amico. One of our tech TAs at Central Valley, Diana Durico. School monitor at Smith Clove, Linda Di Battista. Man, CV's got a bunch of people on this list. Head custodian, Brian Dietz. The health office assistant from the middle school, Patty Damit. World language Spanish teacher from the middle school, Ms. Jenny Esposito. One-on-one monitor at the middle school, Wilma Fragiacomo, Fragiacomo, sorry. Assistant cook manager at the high school, Adriana Geraldo. Math teacher here in the high school for the last 30 years, Ray Hodges. Teaching assistant at the middle school, Lucy Ma. One of our bilingual typists at the transportation department, Evelyn Maeda. Teaching assistant at Sapphire, Sarah Martucci. School bus driver, Deborah Muzeski-Olin. North Main's health office assistant, Kathy McDonald. Much like Central Valley, the athletic office saw a lot of change this year. One of their typists, Eva McNulty. School monitor Sapphire, Gail Monday. Teaching assistant at CV, Lynn Niebor. Teaching assistant at the middle school, Maribel Norrett. Teacher from Smith Clove, Kathy O'Dowd. One of the math teaching assistants at North Main, Carol O'Neill. Teaching assistant at the high school, Robin Perisi. Our one-on-one monitor from the middle school, Kathy Presti. One of our teachers right here at the high school, Valerie Robinson. One-on-one monitor at the high school, Janet Rodriguez. Another health office assistant at Pine Tree, Sue Scanlon. Phys ed teacher at the middle school, Dana Shackman. Science teacher here at the high school, Robert Schiff. One of our elementary teachers at North Main, Deena Shordall. One of our custodians at the high school, Teresa Simonetti. Longtime school bus driver and trainer, Terry Tomer. One of the secretaries in the athletics office, Kathy Van Etten. A head maintenance worker, John Watt. Another middle school phys ed teacher, Lisa Witcomb-Beeby. Another middle school phys ed teacher, Lisa Whitcomb Beebe. And a school monitor here, Deborah Ziblit.
Congratulations to all of the retirees. Mr. Kravitz will now present the superintendent's tenure recommendations for us.
So before I, before I read a list of names, I would respectfully request approval for the superintendent's recommendation for tenure.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did it pass?
Yes. I'm sorry.
All right, then I can congratulate the people who are receiving tenure tonight. So, um, tenure, tenure is something that the district does not take lightly. It is, it is something that many people try to achieve, and it's something that we take very seriously. It's an opportunity tonight for us to recognize those people who we hope will be with us for, for a long, long time. So if you're here, you can just stand up and we'll recognize you that way. So I'm just going to go in alphabetical order. Congratulations to Central Valley Principal Christine Arlt. High school English teacher, Carrie Baird. Middle school social studies teacher, Ricky Callen. Middle school music teacher, Brian Clark. Pine Tree Special Education teacher, Emma Clarahue. For the second time at Monroe Woodbury High School, math teacher, Carrie Ann Cunningham. North Main Assistant Principal Roger Davis. Smith Clove Elementary teacher, Caitlin Flood. Pine Tree Elementary teacher, Kelly Gould. High school teaching assistant, Michelle Kristansky. Central Valley Music teacher, Mitchell Lang. Middle school science teacher, Julie Loughlin. Middle school principal, Michael Musano. Wondering why you shaved? High school assistant principal, Shauna Markovich. Central Valley Reading teacher, Lindsay McElroy. Middle school teaching assistant, Maria Magnano. High school science teacher, Jessica Popolo. Smith Clove Assistant Principal, Nicole Reagan. Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Christine Ricker. Smith Clove Teaching Assistant, Ashley Rivas. Middle school fax teacher, Stephanie Rizzi. Pine Tree Speech and Language teacher, Kimberly Robinson. North Main Special Ed teacher, Janine Rubio. Smith Clove Special Education teacher, Vanessa Shares. Central Valley Special Education teacher, Michelle Schuler. Middle school science teacher, Andrew Scolara. High school technology teacher, Sidney Telik. High school phys ed teacher, Patrick Tierney. And middle school reading teacher, Danielle Vilman. Congratulations to all of our tenure recipients.
Mr. Kravitz, you forgot one person.
What's that?
I said you forgot one person.
I did, intentionally.
And that would be Mr. Matthew Kravitz.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to thank all the administrative staff who met with us several weeks ago and gave us up-close information about all of those that are receiving tenure tonight, and we congratulate all of you. It's very well deserved, so good luck and congratulations. May I have a motion to approve the following textbooks, Discovering Careers and Guide to Good Food?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt the vote and adoption of resolution declaring the results of the annual election that were held on May 18th, 2021?
I motion.
Second.
All those in favor? We have the establishment of our 2021-2022 School Board of Education meetings. May I have a motion to approve this schedule?
I motion.
Second.
All those in favor? May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
From the May 5th, 2021 special meeting and the May 18th, 2021 annual meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Matt, for personnel?
So, thank you very much. And before I ask for approval of the items listed under personnel, I just want to point out two, two groups. We have some classified appointments and some certified appointments. Two people I'd like to point out under our classified appointments, as our new Director of Facilities, Andre Rudjak. With big shoes to fill, but somebody who we really believe can do it, as our new Assistant Director for Transportation, Jesse Lazar. And I believe we have two brand-new teachers in our audience. I can see them, I can see them from here. No pressure, but you're, you're joining an incredibly great faculty in our, in our district. We've got Samantha Epstein, who's our new Earth Science teacher at the high school. And Sasha Keys, who's going to be our new, one of our new special education teachers at the middle school. And with that, I'd respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations to everyone. Patrick, for business and financial?
Yeah, I just would respectfully request the approval of the items under the Business and Financial section of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education?
I motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And may I have a motion to please adjourn into executive session to discuss contract negotiations?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.